Vice Mayor Watts, accent. Councilwoman Canapple, present. Councilwoman Scott, accent. Councilman Eagle, here. Councilman Petty, present. Councilman Reese, present. City Attorney Moore, here.
Okay, thank you. As I mentioned, Danielle's been out a little while under the weather and she didn't have the minutes ready, but she will have them ready for us at the next meeting that July next, so we'll see them there. We have considerations of bills over 2,000. We have one for combined bill for Badger Meter and Assist. And Teresa, would you please, CMFO, Teresa Jones, please explain that to us?
Okay. As you all know, we have water views for all our customers that have electronic reading capabilities, so that instead of going and lifting up the lid to each one of them, they can drop by and be able to get those new readings. That software, we were told, is going out of date and they have to have an upgrade for it. And it was an upgrade that we did not know about when we planned the budget. So that's what this is for. This is just to update the software, get a new reading device that the guys can take out. And that's what the Badger portion is. And the central square portion is all of that information has to be loaded into our general ledger system in order to create the invoicing. And so this is basically to build that new interface that's going to have to be there for that data pile. So both of these added together, we are looking at $7,163.50 for this new software upgrade.
What is their timeframe to do this stuff?
They say that if we do not do this, the upgrade, the support that we have will currently end in October. So we have either got to do that or go with a different company, which by all means will be much more expensive and we won't be able to meet our October deadline anyway.
And you might share with them how much money we actually saved on this too, from the original invoice they gave?
They gave us an original invoice and after talking with them, and they were able to pull it down a few thousand dollars for us.
Ten?
Yeah. They, since we had gone into the life cycle of this software a little later in the game, but they said that if we go to this, they do not anticipate another upgrade for many more years to come. So they don't have their projections as to when this will be, this one will begin, so...
And I think they say this takes it into the cloud rather, into a system, and that's why they won't have, hopefully, to upgrade this anytime soon. Any questions in the council?
So yeah, so it does take us into the cloud, so the cloud, that should provide easier levels of future.
Yes.
All right. All right. Lots of better, just, I don't like naming, but motion approved.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion on this? Okay. Councilwoman Eagle, make a motion, and Councilman Petty.
And we also need a budget amendment on this.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna...
Well, first, let's just approve to pay it, and then we'll, then we'll have to do a budget amendment, yes. So all in favor of paying this invoice?
Aye.
Okay. And then I need an amendment to amend the budget for that amount.
Pushing to amend the budget? I'll second.
Okay.
Just to clarify that, we'll need to be in ordinance, so we can do that on first reading?
Yeah.
Good question.
Okay. Did we write up a...
We have, now, if you want to have it just be the first reading, I think that'll be fine.
Okay.
Do we, would we have to advertise for a budget amendment for it? I don't think we do, do we?
It will.
Because it's a reading?
Yeah, again, I'm comfortable if you want to treat this as first reading of an ordinance to amend, and we'll have the final ordinance with this change on second reading. Y'all are comfortable with that? Otherwise, we'll bring it back next month on first reading.
All right, so we have...
Motion for first reading, is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Councilman Teddy. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of the...
Aye.
So we'll make a, Mr. Jones, we're gonna make a line item for that one, okay? Okay, the next item is, do we have any citizens here who want to speak to any issues? This is citizens' concern time.
I know a citizen that wasn't show up, but they're not here, and I'm gonna jump in just real quick, where you guys don't want to be that late tonight. Here, I guess they're coming up with, they're the restaurant man at the Walton Hotel, and they were asking about trash, and I invited him to come out and talk about it, so...
Okay, well, they're invited anytime they want to come out and talk about anything. Great. All right, thank you. Okay, on the mayor's report, just a few things that are happening good around town. The Walmart, our folks have been working on some lines and stuff over there, but they are working on having online ordering and pickup service, so it's gonna be happening pretty soon over there. We want to thank John Leppwich for the parking lot that he has built graciously right in the middle of our town and is using it for public parking. We really appreciate that. There are two grants that we're looking at. One is the Blue Cross playground equipment that we looked at last year. Didn't quite make it, but it's up again. So if it's all right with everybody else, we're just gonna reapply for it this year and see if we can get on. We had so many good letters of support last time that we may have a good chance this time around. We also have, we've been talking about the intersection at Upper Ferry and 25 needing lighting. So many people have actually touched base with us about that. T-Dot has a grant coming up through Mark Dunne at UCDD has called about that, and he's gonna apply to see if we can get one of their grants. It would be for lighting and a crosswalk there, which would be really, really nice to have some of the residents who walk over to Walmart. And a lot of the people pulling out of there just say it's not well lit and they have trouble pulling out. So he's gonna put us in the running for one of those grants too, just to see if we can qualify for that. Nothing official yet, he's just gonna, just see if we can qualify. Right now, we're still on track for the Ball State classes to start at the end of this The virus may have some effect on that, but right now, they would have all the distance, that have been distance, and people are gonna wear masks coming in, so it's gonna be very well supervised, and we would have an SRO there if we do this. Got a lot of new things happening in town. We're really excited about some new businesses coming in and the old businesses that are there, so I just think things, good things are happening here in Harley. So we're really grateful for that. Okay, next report is...
Would it be appropriate for us to go ahead and just motion for those two grants to be applied for?
Well, we can, we may or may not, I think that'd be fine, sure.
Yeah, just to make it official.
Okay.
Okay. I like the motion for, we'll do both grants to be applied for.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of going ahead and applying for the grants?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we have our city attorneys' report. Mr. Moore?
I don't have a report, but I'd like to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? Okay. Next report is our CMFO, Ms. Teresa Jones. Do you have anything to share?
We are just continuing to work through a final month in the last year. I'm working currently right now on the July reports to go out to the supervisors, so that's in process and hopefully will be sent out within the next couple of days. The ladies in the office have been very busy. They have had lots of new people coming in asking for new services with the buildings and stuff that people have been on the team, so that's been good news for our city. So we're just gonna stay steadily doing that.
Well, yeah, and I just wanna give kudos again to all the ladies in the office and Teresa, who do the hard work to get our accounting in order. We really appreciate the hard work you've been putting into that.
Can you send those up, please?
The next one would be Danielle, the reporter. She is, I mentioned, under the weather right now, so our next report would be from Police Chief Davis.
As everybody who guys, who don't have much to talk about tonight, your thing is going okay with the police department? One officer that's been out for a while, he should be back before the next meeting, so it's a good thing. The one officer's still in the police academy, still going good, everything's going good with him. I spoke to the mayor earlier today, actually. I think y'all know we've been trying to look at some improvements for the city, City Hall, area and stuff like that. I believe she, I spoke to the company in Lebanon to try to get some quotes for some things. Two of the different things I've been looking at, trying to get done, were to replace the front door for City Hall to make it a little bit more secure, a little bit better accessible for people, and actually more beneficial for the workers down there at City Hall as well. So to do in that, to help handicap accessible, it would help the ladies in the office over there, help our dispatch and all that. Mayor, do you want me to give some of those numbers right now, just to talk about that, or? As far as the price, I mean, that has to talk about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's just to think about.
Yeah. So the front door from the company that she talked to in Lebanon is around $3,800, give or take a few dollars, and we need to replace that door from the frame, the door. It would kind of look the same, it would just operate a little bit different. It would open and swing outwards, it would not swing inwards, be a little bit, like I said, more handicap accessible. And then, like I said, it would also have a little bit more access and ease for the ladies over in the office and for the dispatchers as well. And then also, they looked at replacing some of the windows inside in City Hall to make them a little bit more secure. And that number, depending on what kind you went with, went anywhere from roughly $6,000 up to about $73, $7400. What difference is that? Is it just the one that's busted out?
No, that one's already fixed. The one in front is inside once you get inside, so...
Oh, great.
If you kind of understand what I'm talking about, that window up there, so...
Could I make a suggestion that we also check with Heron Glass and Cookville?
Heron Glass?
Heron Glass, just to get another opinion.
Sure, but how do you...
We've had a lot of people up coming there, we've had some good results with them, and I didn't figure...
I'm sorry, are you saying Heron?
I believe it's H-E-R-O-N.
Okay. Sure, we'll do that.
It's Heron. Just wanted to throw that out there, because we've been talking with the mayor and trying to figure out some ideas and solutions to make City Hall a little bit better, so...
Do they also do doors?
You know, I'm not sure about that. I would suspect they probably do, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have to ask. Thank you. Unless y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Public Works, Mr. Leslie Fisher.
I don't have nothing, no. Randy Boney called me about the crosswalks today, seven eighty-six of them, they were off.
Seven eighty-six dollars? That's eight hundred or what we go with on it, so I think we can still handle with it.
What, king of framing art? I'd like to make it straight across.
That would make sense, yeah. Then I'll make a motion to go with it, if you need a motion.
Make it straight across, they're making me handle across that road. I don't know why they did that.
Yeah.
Do you agree?
I think that's actually an item of new business, if you want to, hold on, so we voted? No, no, what I'm saying, we could address it. Okay, that's great.
Sam, I think we voted that if it's under that certain amount, who's like 28, I think you can just promote it and do another one.
I wonder if that will lie, not necessarily deny, but something to think about is, in legend, actually, this, and I may have asked him before, is, in the long run, worth their time to buy a stripe? We're looking for work we can do.
It's worth looking at.
Let's leave it at that. But that seemed like a very good rule.
Running best to...
Okay.
So is that a machine that just makes the line? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, it runs off an hour too. It loads it in the asphalt, no.
So is that...
It's very similar to the stripes. Stripes that they use out on highways when they're doing some lines and stuff like that. If it's open, they know...
Well, you can roll it on there, but it won't last like dust.
Yeah, they use it like on lower areas, like lower density areas. It's not as permanent as the ones budgeting something out there, that anything gets touched too much.
Okay, so we'll come to that, the new business, but if, like you said, if it's under 2,000, we could probably take care of that as a budget. Okay. All right, thank you. The, Mr. Derek Brooks isn't here tonight, by the way, his grandmother passed away, so we send our condolences to their family on that. The water plant, Mr. Rusty, Jen, you've got something later, but anything else besides that? I said you have something later, but is there anything, Jen, or you want to tell us?
No, just everything's running smoothly at the plant right now. There's nothing that, you know, the council needs to deal with at this time, but I'm here for any question you have.
All right, and later we'll talk about what's happening, okay? Thank you. Mr. Steve Key?
Our business, as usual, at the plant, got our letter, Bill, and I'm always big about trying to save money, so the July 2020 bill was over $400 cheaper than the July 2019.
Great.
So that was good. Also, I need to acknowledge Les Fisher, Derek Brooks, and last month, they've helped me three or four different times, one day to buy all day over there, and so they saved the town a lot of money coming in, got us good stuff, so if you give them what credit too, but they showed us some questions, that's all I've got.
Okay, all right, thank you. Chief High, Fire Department?
Have my written report there, that's all I've got.
This report, okay, thank you, thank you very much. All right. Oh, let's see if we can pull this off. We're gonna try to call the grant writers just to give an update, you can't do the Zoom stuff in here. Hang on with me just a minute here.
Hey, hey, Mayor Smith.
Hey, Virginia, we're here. Can you, can y'all hear her? Okay, sort of? All right, could you just give us just an update on the downtown building facade grant, please?
Yeah, the, most of the projects are completed, as far as like the major ones that made a painting. Most of the projects, we are working on closing out the financials for it, and I know the audience has some issues, but I'm gonna come out a week today to fix that. I had a turnip there down this week, but I know the audience wants, is gonna be wanting to get the audience up for the remaining building, that's where the, the health center and the clear building, and always, good keep from here. The health center door, it's finally made in, we need to reach into that project, so the Ken and we all have to get that to state for approval. So once we have that, we'll do a contract signing of that project, so it shouldn't take long enough to get to approval. And then, I think that's all of our city's content right now, and then we started accepting applications to review for the remaining funds, we have about $13,000 left, so I know there's people that are considering all these projects, and we talked to a few different people about other things, so there's been a point mark and all that, so we're just gonna take those applications and then try to set up a design waiting to be done first.
And we'll be setting up the committee, a meeting of the facade committee to approve that, that's kind of how that works, so...
Do you know when? Do we have another date? We can have that meeting? Because we need to talk about several things, one with that.
Okay, remind me, and then I'll try to make some...
Okay, but we do need to do it as soon as possible. About the trash dump, dumpster and all that, too, so...
Okay, okay. Yes, ma'am. This is, this is Councilwoman Canapple, has a question.
I didn't pitch, how much is left? How much?
Thirteen, you said 13,000, is that right? Virginia? Hello?
It's kind of hard to hear you, I understand.
How much is left, she's asking?
We have about $13,000 left.
We've had three different businesses that have put in, resubmitted, a couple of them had submitted before and they resubmitted, so we'll bring that to the committee once we make a meeting.
But that has not been approved yet?
No, no, no.
Are you still taking applications for that?
If it's storefront, yes, uh-huh.
Is there a deadline?
I don't know. Virginia, is there a deadline for everybody to get this in?
What time?
Is there a deadline to get these in?
No, I mean, as long as we have projects in the work, we can ask for an extension of projects, there's still a number, you know, we can set a deadline if you guys want to, but we can also ask for an extension, but you will have projects in the work, so we don't have a time.
Okay. And again, it's just for awnings, painting buildings, windows, doors, things that would be the front, the facade of the building.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Virginia? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, goodbye. Okay, let's see, we'll go to the next one. Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones? We may need you a little bit louder. We're here in the, with the council, and we just want to get an update on the future alley water line, the SRF loan, and could you just tell us a little bit what's happening with that, please? You don't? Okay.
As I said in my email that I sent to you earlier today, I'll be through. I went through the drawings of the engineers of the day, we're gonna go follow vision, how it might come down one day next week, maybe with hearing sound to go over, the layout and the specifications and how it will look over, we're committing the project, we're submitting it to SRF for approval, but I anticipate if we can get here in the, Thursday or Friday of next week, that is on Friday, and that's what Monday, we'll be able to bring the permission to SRL project.
Okay, so we will do that. But we haven't, as far as the loan, all of this has to happen prior, so that's, we're on the course to do that, then?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
So as far as the loan itself, this is what we're doing, we're working toward getting that applied for and moving forward, all of the work we're doing right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For, here's a schedule, if everybody's had the ones we made, and we'll have that submitted to SRL, and SRL should, we should be able to get them processed as quickly. Y'all would just take plans, review from T-Tech on the technical side, within two weeks, the plans submitted to SRL will have to go through, including financials, mortgage, okay, the financials, everything prior, obviously, before they can finish the final loan package.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone have questions regarding this? Okay. Mr. Jones, I think we're okay. Mr. Jones? I think we're okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Sorry. All right, that's, moving right along here, thank you. Oh, and the next is the unfinished business, and again, that's the walking track, so Mr., let me see if I can catch him, and that'll be the last call, hopefully. Oops. Mr. Jones, we're okay, thank you. All right. Well, it did, but that's all right, thank you very much, appreciate it. We'll talk to you later.
Yes, sir.
Mr. White, this is Mayor Smith. We're here in the council meeting, and could you just tell us a little bit of an update on the walking track and where we are with that, please?
No, we took the bid on yesterday, and I do have about $45,000 over what is allotted in the grant, and they will be my recommendations that y'all are checking and all of this, and it was your back to the RGC grant agency, and that's what we can kind of determine out your community, but I...
Hold on just a minute, so we just do a vote tonight to reject or reject? Did we do that, or just... Should we do that now, through the...
It's up to the council. I can't hear anything, he said.
Well, come on, and we had a, could you repeat it, please? I'll come on out if you can hear.
Can you repeat it again?
Yeah.
Okay, we just bid on yesterday, or I guess the day before, on the bid, and the bid came in $45,000 over for what's allotted in the original application to the RGC program.
Okay, let me, hold on, let me repeat that. The bids came in $45,000, the low bid came in $45,000 over. So he's, he's fragmenting that we reject those bids because we know we can get it for less than this, and then we will rebid it with a little change of the specs on it, and...
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And, and you have multiple contractors pick up because they didn't get their bid on Friday at time, so I told them, and they said they wouldn't submit that time, so that would be figures too, because it, I would have been pick up on them, they were probably bidding, building a hotel room.
Right. Okay. So if it's, hold on just a minute, Mr. White, so if it's okay, could someone make the motion then?
Make a motion to reject the bid.
Okay, so the motion to reject the bid, do it, I'll say. Okay, any discussion on that? Second? Yeah. And then, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of rejecting and rebidding this?
Aye.
All right, we're on board with, we're on board with that. Is there anything right now we need to know, we're gonna go forward with rebidding, right?
Yes, correct, and we'll be in touch with the recreational drills program, but it's gonna kind of be a plan what they'll let us, what they'll let us do and not do, so we'll be in close contact with them, but if you guys see what we can do to take it in. They have, you know, to figure out that $40,000 or so, I don't think White would figure out that much, just because it's been out and out contract here, so what we are going to do a little something, probably to make it, to make it a little less...
Okay, we have one question, hold on just a minute.
Does that include the parts of the dog park that we voted on already? The walking track project, does that include parts of the dog park?
It includes the whole area there.
The whole area, so it includes some of the, because we were gonna do some grading or something, were we?
Yeah, it's, this is, yeah, it's grading and everything.
So that'll answer my question on that, okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think, unless there's more questions, I think that's very good, thank you, Mr. White.
All right, I know.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little bit in the dark on this, and I'm doing some of this bidding, but I thought we already have been told way, way back ago that we were just waiting for good weather to do this work. What happened to that?
Well, no, it had never been bid, it had to be bid first, so they had to get, it starts with all the plans going down, and those had to be the plans.
All right.
They kept redoing the plans and redoing, that's a flex on it, it's an extra layer because the team and FEMA involved, so we had to do, he had to do an extra layer of work.
We're basically good to go as long, like I said, I've had a lot of people asking about the dog park and when that's going up, and so...
See, that's a whole different thing from this, though.
Well, don't we, but I know that this is a scout project, and so he's, they're, they gotta have to grade it before they do the scout project, and so they're, that's basically, you can address that.
Everything, as far as design, has been approved by T-Tech, so that's all ready to go. It's just, we went through this bid process, which takes a couple of weeks to get the bid out and everything, and unfortunately, like you said, the two who bid it were from out of town, so it's a lot of extra expense in it.
Would you, would you be able to call the family with the scout project just as soon as you find out about the bid? That way they can kind of...
Sure.
Give them some updates?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're talking with the dog park?
Yeah, the dog park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because scouting thing depends on it.
Yeah, exactly, so that's kind of where...
I'd be a bit anxious about it.
I wish there were, well, there is an alternative, because I suggested to him, but he wasn't...
It happens. It happens, it's just communicating is all.
Because he was getting money, uh, go funding?
Yeah, he got funding and, and I think everybody expects that things are slowing down for COVID and everything.
Yeah, that's part of the problem because all these people are working from home. So it's, we're TTEC and some of them. Okay, so that's great. So we're going to go to, um, the next unfinished business is, uh, the water pump system that we've been talking about in place of the water tank. Mr. Reese, could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Uh, I can tell you where we're at right now. Uh, we, we had a meeting Tuesday with, uh, Les and Derek, myself, the mayor, and Mr. Jones, engineer. And, uh, we've determined that, uh, our current, uh, pump station site will be sufficient to do the work we need, uh, for the upgrade. Uh, we're in the process right now of, uh, putting a bid in house together. We're, we agreed to, as the city, we could try to save money that we would do the building first, the structure first, and then let them build into. And we're in the process right now of getting, uh, bids together for what it would cost us to build versus what an independent contractor would cost. And whichever is the most economical, that's probably the way we'll go to save money. Yeah, it's more than likely that'd be us doing it. Uh, after that, it'll be turned back over to the engineer for, for, uh, his final drawings and then the bid process as well. That's pretty much where we're at right now.
Thank you. So moving forward. As long as we're moving forward, good. We can't control COVID and a lot of these other things that are having influence right now. Um, okay, Attorney Moore, uh, discussion about the social media policy?
So I'm glad to answer your questions. I think I circulated this, uh, revised social media policy early this week. Uh, the primary change from what was before you for review last month was just to add what is, you had suggested that the, basically, the social media account of the town be managed by the town reporter. Um, definitely about the only changes to it. But I'm glad to answer your questions.
Do we just need to vote or we already voted on it?
If we want to adopt it, I would just make a motion.
Okay, motion to adopt new social media policy.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt, I hear second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Okay, um, Bill, would you, okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed?
No.
You started to say something, I didn't, I didn't want to cut you off. All right. Okay, well, that's three to one. That's, okay. Okay, um, okay, do it. Let's see, Vortex Pump at Main Road Station, Steve?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I need to ask the council approval. Uh, the main road station there at the plant, last year, we, we've had trouble for a couple of years. This pump's going to flow at all times, rags. So last year, my number two pump went out. Y'all will get us permission to buy a Vortex pump, a twenty horse. Uh, they put it in in October and does it today. It's not missed to bits. We haven't had pull it. Well, number one pump is, is locked up now. Uh, so we're setting the same scenario. Uh, so I've got a float from Los Con, the same type pump, labor and everything is eight thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents. We did budget for this in our, uh, collection budget. So I just want to try to get approval to go ahead and get this on order because it may take a couple of months to get it in and installed. And we'd like to have it in before the wet season gets here this fall.
We don't have a motion to vote.
I'm sorry.
A motion to get the pump.
So we have a motion to go ahead and order the pump. But Council E will second by Council Teddy.
Did you motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, second by Council Teddy. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of, uh, allowing supervisor Key to go ahead and order the pump, say aye please?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Great. Then we, we have the question of, and I think, did you guys have it? They're not, uh, I have, if you remember, we talked some time ago about the county. Yeah, the county sent us a, um, a request to pay some additional for their county tax assessments. And we've been kind of trying to find out what other cities are really doing about this. Uh, I had sent a request down to INPASS legal also, as well as Mr. Moore to kind of tell us what some of the other cities are doing. And that's kind of highlighted, I think I sent this to you earlier in the email, but I just got this today, actually. Uh, so that's the, that's the email that I'm trying to come, Mr. Jacob, INPASS, kind of saying that they're legal down there. So it's happening in different places. And then Mr. Moore kind of talked to us about it. And then this is, um, that's, the first one is what Mr. Collins is requesting from out there. An addition, this is an addition to, um, anything we're paying to the county right now in taxes or whatever.
What do they want that much?
Well, it's on here, the front page, second page, if you turn over, it's on the back of the front page there. He's wanting, um-
Ten thousand?
Basically, after doing all the equations, it's about ten thousand three hundred and eleven. Mr. Moore, did you have, did you say anything about this?
No, well, we discussed this briefly last week. And the statute is pretty clear that the city has to pay half of the appraisal amount for partial within the city. Uh, I don't know how this amount compares to prior, uh, cost, but-
Could, could, we, could you address some of this, please, if there's anything? I, I don't quite understand it for the three or five things that we-
Yeah, I mean, all of this basically doesn't give any justification for why the city wouldn't have to pay it. All it says here is what the city's options are if it wants to challenge the appraisal. That is to pay it or pay an amount that seems reasonable, uh, or wait to get sued or try to negotiate another agreement with the county, so.
Do they have a standing to enter suit against this, this stuff that they're, it's an audit that they found? So would it just be something like, okay, we found this has been happening, uh, it's kind of their fault? So would we just fix it on 2020 or no?
No, again, this is cost related to the cost of the reappraisal, which as I understand, took place last year at County Level.
This is the reappraisal. This is not the new, the properties that were being, being corrected. Is that correct?
Correct. This is just for their cost of the reappraisal. And they've done it on a per parcel basis based upon what they said their total costs are, what they budgeted for. Now, you know, it, I can't say whether it adds up or not, or whether that makes sense to look at it more closely. But I can tell you that the statute does require the city to pay their share of that cost. And so my suggestion would be unless the town has some basis to determine that that's, this amount's incorrect. Uh, and certainly we can, one of the suggestions that INPASS makes is to try to get more information from the county, uh, to verify that. Um, but otherwise, you know, the town does have to pay for it, so.
May I ask a question? Because I've, I've called a couple of the cities around and some of them actually had agreements that they had made with their counties. Apparently, we, we didn't, or at least we said they did. And then I guess maybe Carthage ever made one whenever it was supposed to have been made. So should, I guess the question is going forward, which should we have some kind of agreement about this?
That is an option, is to negotiate agreement with the county for what, what the town's contribution will be. But in the absence of an agreement, it just says that the city will pay that.
So what would you suggest going forward? If we could go ahead and pay this, how do we get that agreement?
I would just reach out to the county and ask them if we could come up with the next reappraisal, come up with an agreed amount of the town's contribution to that before they expend it. And, and I do think it's worth looking at these numbers and maybe reaching out and asking them to verify this information before check is written. But, uh, I don't, I, I don't know of any basis to challenge the obligation to pay it.
So I agree that that would be appropriate to just ask them for documentation behind the claim and get all that in writing for the right tag, you know, spend that money towards them. Let's, let's get the documentation together.
Okay, so should we, uh, give a motion for that? Could we just ask, would that be for seeing my vote, would we request that?
I would think so. I'm glad to do it, but it might be if you want to, Teresa and I together could come up with the appropriate question.
All right, so we'll work together and see how to do that.
Okay.
Okay, and then from there, then we would pay after with the documents or whatever come out.
Right, if we can get a response, hopefully we can make a recommendation by next month's meeting.
Okay, and then we'll try to reach out before, whenever this happens again, to get some sort of agreement. Would that, and is this every year or every other period?
Every time they do a reappraisal, which is, I don't remember. And then that's, it's five years.
Okay, so that's kind of our game plan there. Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, going into new business, we have, um, this ordinance that, uh, this is actually from OSHA. This is not anything we wrote, it's written by OSHA, it's pretty standard. But every, every seven years is what they're telling us we have to redo this. Uh, the last ordinance, I looked in the ordinance book, because it was about two pages long. This one is like closer to playing, I think. Um, but Mr. Moore's looked over it and, um, Tim Aldrich, who's been doing this for us, and we'll talk about him in just a minute, uh, is the one who's given us this. And as far as we can tell, this is just standard that we need to approve for this. Okay, so we just need a motion to approve this on first reading. We have got two readings of it and it's, um, let me just read the official, this ordinance number, uh, CCO twenty twenty dash oh eight dash oh six is the first reading. Do I have a motion to approve this on first reading?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councilman Teddy made a motion second, but Councilman Reese, any further discussion about that?
Does this, this is just basically setting a standard? It doesn't imply any, uh, enforcement of the standard. It's basically setting a standard.
Well, this sets up that we have a, a director of safety and health and that's what we'll talk about.
And that's what's going on next.
And this is what they-
We're setting up, we're setting up, well, this is their standard. We'll have a director, that'll be where the, where the enforcement comes from. Okay, gotcha, so, all right, thank you.
And again, this is the standard across the board that they're doing this right now. So we, uh, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of passing a first reading?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Yeah, thank you. So we'll go into second reading next, next month. Then in the same vein, um, we do have to have, and you'll see on the second page, it's called, uh, back page here. It's the, uh, it's called the Safety Director of Occupational Safety and Health from OSHA. And it's the local person who takes care of our, our folks, make sure everything's running right. And we've talked with, uh, with all the supervisors and they're, they're all okay from Tim Aldrich to continue that he's been doing the last couple of years. It's, involves an awful lot of paperwork. Um, so he's okay to continue with that. We just need to get approval for him.
Does he have proper training from the state or from OSHA or whatever to do this?
He's been doing this training for a couple of years.
Actual training though or not? I don't, maybe, and I'm not opposed to him, I just want, we kind of got, just kind of hit us in the face. Very big league. Uh, is he, is there formal training that he's had for this?
Well, less, not formal, formal, he's just been doing a couple of years. But none of our employees have, he's, he's the most trained of our employees. He's the one who's been doing it for a couple of years, but it's not, uh-
But is he, is there formal training that, that needs to be done?
No, they do it within, I think they do it within, once they're appointed, they can, they get those, it's outlined in here.
We could probably, and then-
Yeah, it's outlined in here kind of what he has to do. What he basically does, if you read under administration on the second page, he's, he, uh, the safety director should develop a plan of operation for the program plan in accordance with the rules. He's been doing a tremendous amount, I'm understanding, of paperwork back and forth with these people. Um, I don't know that there's, there's ongoing stuff he's been doing, but I don't know about formal training per se. There's something that's still missing about that.
So he's already doing this, right?
He's been doing it. He volunteered under, under the last ordinance, which was only two pages long. Uh, it was, it was the supervisor, other word supervisor, was Charles Nasty at the time? And then when he left, I think, um, said he'd take over and do it. I don't know that either of them had any kind of formal training. It's just ongoing materials coming in. They, he does do, uh, safety things each month, I think, presentations, it's through videos or online. Um, but no, there's no, I, I-
Is this something he has to do to keep his potentials or whatever?
No, this is, this is totally separate.
It's pretty, it's pretty similar, like, most, most places have like your, this is your OSHA person. So it's like that, and usually you're like, oh, we have a problem, go to the OSHA person and they take care of it, blah, blah, blah. And it's kind of just a, is that what it says? And it doesn't hurt, I don't think it would hurt to have some, uh, formal training. But I think a lot is like online kind of stuff, like, it's just your designated person, you know?
I'd sign it out if we got a twenty-page ordinance and the person that's going to commit to it, uh, their state is not, or I guess they do federal, it's not set up any formal training.
I would think there would be some. Did, I mean-
I would think it would be bad.
If you look at page eleven, there's, it says education and training. There's something right here, I didn't look that closely. Okay, arrangements will be made for the safety director and compliance inspectors to attend training seminars, blah, blah, blah. So we will make arrangements for him to do that. This is brand new ordinance, so it's, uh, that wasn't in there before.
Do we know the cost for what it's going to pay to do those?
There's nothing in here that says, again, we just recently got this ordinance, so.
And it's a lot of corporate, a lot of information.
And if they're, he's responsible for keeping all the OSHA standards, maybe he goes to, has to check out the departments and make sure everything's safe. And so yes, there will be some training required, but, but not necessarily to be appointed. But as I said, after he's appointed, he will have to be trained. That's on page eleven, if you look at the training and education.
Well, Tim wants it, I'll motion that we, I give it to him.
Uh, Tim Aldrich, and we need a motion to, to appoint him. It's not lifetime appointment, it's just for now. Uh, Don, you're second to that, to appoint him. Our councilwoman can add seconds. Any further discussion on that? And we will make sure that-
So we, we will find out, like, how much it's going to cost.
Well, maybe the training is free, maybe supplied by OSHA's supply. I, I, I don't, I think it would, I don't know, are you, I don't know yet.
I don't know that I've ever seen a separate invoice from TOSHA for the training cost. Not to say that there wouldn't be some things that they don't charge for. But I think the bottom line is, is you have to designate someone to fill that role in order to comply with the regulations and to keep, uh, getting funding for grants and other things. So, um, you've, you've got to appoint somebody to fill that role.
And then apparently, under this new ordinance, once they're appointed, then there will be training, further training for them, is what I'm gathering. And it's, but as I say, it's, it's pretty well outlined in here what has to be done to protect employees and what rights employees have under TOSHA, Tennessee OSHA, to, to, to be protected.
And first ordinance will come back next month for second reading.
Yeah, so yeah, if you have a chance between now and next month, we, we, and we'll have Tim here too. He's, his wife had a birthday tonight, so we'll get him tonight. So this is just the first reading. We can still say yea or nay on the second reading. Well, this is, oh, this is still on him, sorry.
Yeah, I, I think it's part of the same ordinance, I understand the separation better.
Okay, that's right, because it says in here who it would be basically, or what person. So if it didn't work, we have second reading next time and we can address it then. That's okay with everybody. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, it's a little- Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor of first reading of the ordinance?
No, this is for Tim.
No, this is for Tim.
Tim, sorry, which is part of the, okay, all in favor of approving Tim for this decision?
I don't want to have to stay because I just don't think that we know as much as we need to know. There's nothing against Tim. I would like to at least put it off till next month till we have time to find out a little bit more about it.
You can do that, that's fine. You want to table this to next month? We just have to have somebody pretty soon because it's required, that's what you were saying.
Yeah, I think the assumption is it's the Public Works Director unless you name someone else specific in the budget or in the ordinance.
In the, in the old ordinance, it was Public Works, or, or someone who's certified. Tim, Tim is certified in distribution and what else, Les, is he certified? Distribution and...
Cross connection.
Cross connection?
Yeah.
Derek is certified in distribution and cross connection too, I think. And very honestly, it's, it's a very time-consuming position and I think the other supervisors felt like maybe, I don't know, Ressie, you want to speak to that?
Well, the new ordinance that they sent out is considered more lengthy than the old. But I think OSHA is still going to do the inspections and everything like they always have. Tim will basically be the contact man for the city that will, yes, and if there is, if there is like any kind of minor violations, it will be Tim's responsibility to see that the department supervisors correct it, document it, and get it reported to OSHA and get that off the books. We do that now ourselves, every time they come, you know, they always find a couple of things. We already do that now, but Tim will be the coordinator for that. And if they have questions, they won't call us and we can contact him. That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's a good point. It's not he's going to be the one who's checking all of this. It's still OSHA or OSHA doing it.
Now, I think if you read that, clearly it gives him some, I guess, latitude to, if he sees something he knows is wrong, to bring it to the department head to be fixed. And then, you know, then, you know, we'll take care of it before OSHA becomes involved. I think that's the one.
I, I agree that, you know, we should look into getting some training in the office. There needs to, you know, report, reporting policies, things like that, we'll do it correctly. Absolutely.
Well, and I have a feeling they have their own training because it's specified in here, so, so...
My understanding is if he comes to the Westwater plant and we're out working and he found a safety hazard or a problem, he'll contact me.
Right.
We would discuss it, try to correct it, but if it became where there was a question coming in now, we could go to the mayor. That would be the final stop as far as his authority, or my, the mayor. Hey, we don't, we can't come to an approval on this. That was my understanding. It's like last year when they come to the Westwater plant, they found three things, and then like lockout, tag out, confined space, we weren't going to the paperwork, we're going to... So, we had to make SOPs, get everything over, and I think Tim's job is to make sure that we did it and give it back.
It's just kind of, takes over a little of the paperwork and stuff off of some of the supervisors and then the go-between.
Okay, has, ask, or are we...
Where are we on that?
Well, Barbara wasn't in here when we voted.
Okay.
But she made, she made the second.
Okay, so we're ready to vote?
Well, we voted. Sam Staines, COVID, Bill voted, but Barbara was outside for the vote.
We're voting on...
Appointing Tim, she seconded the motion. Appointing him as the local Safety Director and Occupational Safety person.
So, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that would be...
So, three was in favor and Sam Staines.
Okay, so we're right now, we're appointing Tim, which probably, and when we have a second reading, Tim can come and talk to us if you want him to, he'll be glad to. All right. Thank you. And I'm sure there's going to be some great training he'll get with this. He's already talked about that, so... Okay, we have a thing called the Ten Cares Act Grant that's part of the COVID money that's been awarded from the federal level. And our CMO, um, Teresa Jones, will talk a little bit about that.
There's a new wave of money that the state is sending down to the local governments, there's been an hour, one hundred and fifteen million. Of that car that is set to receive thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Now, there's strings attached with this, of course. The stipulation is this has to be used for COVID nineteen-related expenses from March the first through December thirtieth. And these are expenses that could not have already been budgeted for. So, basically what we have to do is compile up a list of things, send that in to them, and we will be a type of contact. The contact will look at these and let us know for sure what qualifies and what doesn't. And then at that point, we will get a reimbursement for that. What we're, what I was talking with, one of the general, the financial advisor with M-PAS, he was recommending that the easiest thing to do to track this is because he thinks that this will probably be audited by the state at some point. He feels like that what's the easiest way to account for all of this is to set up basically a COVID spending department. So that this way, these type of expenditures don't fall within, you know, any of our department heads' expenses. It just goes into a different, separate bucket. And then this way, everything can easily be traced as to how we're spending this money that we do get that from them. So, that's what we were looking at is letting you all know about the grant and also seeing, getting approval to set up a separate department and getting them in for that, for spending up to thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
That one hundred percent, right?
It is one hundred percent, but the thing that is, you just have to have proof that you're spending it for things and they have to approve it. One of the things that we, that, you know, with the, we've talked to all the department heads and asked them, you know, what do you need, what have you already bought within this timeframe that is COVID-related, so they are turning in things to us and letting us know. But also like the, the camera system that we have now, since we've had to close the doors to COVID, we're, we have the intercom system now on the front door. That would be something that we're going to try to submit in on this also, because that makes it easier for us to be able to answer, answer our customers and taxpayers. So, we're looking at things like that and we will submit this up in, get approval, and then we'll get this money.
Do we have, like, samples of things that might qualify?
They were saying...
Or do they provide that?
They did give us a few things. They were saying things like masks, face shields, gloves, any type of protective suit. They were saying that technology was, was one thing. We're maybe doing a little bit more remote, so something maybe like some additional replacement of some laptops that might could be used for something like that, or webcams for Zoom meetings, since, you know, so much is having to be done that way. Those were some of the things that they kind of gave us examples of.
With the Zoomian on.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're going to, we're going to try to pull everything together and look at it, but it was recommended that we just put this in a separate department. So, this way it was a lot easier to track and, and keep up with and not affect other people's budgets.
Would we, that bucket, would it be a single bucket, like, let's say, under the construction budget? Or would you separate it out, city's department having part of that?
What they would do is set up a separate department, a separate, the COVID business, a COVID spending department. And then we can have a separate line item, one line, you know, for, for, you know, operating supplies, you know, for technology, you know, technology purchases and stuff like that, so we can easily track it.
I motion we set up a department and go forward with the M-SAC grant. We don't know this thing will do over, it could last for a while, so let's prepare for it. If it's going to last for a while, it's not great. It's looking like it's going to last a while, so I'll second the motion.
Would they...
I, I would suggest that we do it as part of a budget amendment. Again, if you want to consider this first reading, then go ahead and create that.
So, this would be first reading of the budget.
Is there a, do we have a department that that not fall under already?
I think she's just suggesting that way, to, to move the money properly so that there's, for auditing purposes, it would be easier just to make a department for it for now, because otherwise it, it might just complicate things with there's an audit, which they're probably more likely.
And it's a very short...
Sounds like we're already having to do this anyway, we just have it on the books.
Right. And it's not, it's more of a short-term thing where we have to verify that we've used it, like she said, in a particular timeframe for COVID-related things.
Easier booking.
Yeah, so that's just, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and second, can we have a motion? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of creating that separate department, line item to this COVID-related, one-time grant that we have. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. And this is the first reading of the budget. All right, my plea reconciliation report in July for the departments.
I think she already has addressed that. What I was going to request was, is that something that you think you would be able to have for the council and council meetings, like, down the road?
Well, some of these things are going to depend on the timing of when they closes, you know, depending on what day the county calls.
So, this, we just expect them sometime during that month, but, yeah, because it's not too fine really, you know?
Well, it's, it, we, we closed out on Friday, and so this is Thursday, this is four business days. So, hopefully within five to six is where, is where I'm hoping that we can, we can get to. But I don't even actually have all the bank statements in yet to be able to even look all the entries, so...
Okay. Oh, yeah, so that was just, that was my request, is just, because you're already sending them, so you just put it up, that was my request.
So, Teresa's working on that one, thank you. Waterville Grace Period?
I was going to ask that you explain publicly kind of what's going on with that, because I'm, I'm not totally...
Teresa, I think, do you have some numbers for what we've done so far to the last four months, I think, that we've been giving?
Yes, Cindy pulled together some information out of our system. Currently right now, just, just to back it up a little bit, what we have done in the past few months is we did not charge late fees in April and May. We refunded the three dollars and fifty cent processing fee for credit and debit card payments for April and May. And we did not disconnect services for non-payments from March through July. So, that's what we have already done so far for the customers. As of right now, we are looking at about, for the builds that were, that were due in in July, we are looking at sixteen customers who are delinquent right now. It's all that we have, and out of those sixteen, fifteen of those have been frequently disconnected before for non-payments, and then one, one sometimes. So, that's really where we stand. Right now, we're looking at about nineteen hundred dollars is, is all that we're looking at. So, we're not looking at that, we have a challenge.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further questions about that?
Thank you.
Okay, fifteen percent tax reduction.
Yes, I was going to go out and ask a city attorney more, what, what steps do we need to take as a council, or do I need to take, or whatever we need to do? Because I want to work on proposing a fifteen percent tax reduction down the road here. So, we have a lot of businesses, a lot of families, been hit really hard on multiple fronts, like, first, twenty-eight percent tax increase on the county side. Second, COVID, third, people are losing jobs, this, that, and the other. And if we can give a break on the city side, I'd love to. I don't think it'd affect us that much on our real numbers as far as you're looking at less than a hundred thousand dollars. I just want to know what the steps we need to take to move forward on at least getting that as a proposal, and that was a question for you, Steve.
Yeah, I'll... Teresa has some numbers too, but I think that's...
And Teresa may know the procedure off the top of her head better than I do. I would, the assumption you do is you do it by an ordinance to reduce the taxes. It has to be combined at, at least with the budget. So, you want to make sure that the budget is adjusted if you were going to move forward with that. But I think the process is through, if it's initiated by the councils, through an ordinance, but I wanted to double-check this match you.
Okay.
Teresa, can you address that as far as this year?
Well, this year, we already have, this year, the law was already passed. The information is already at the state and they're the ones that actually print the notices for us. So, this year, SOP, SOP is already...
Twenty-one, correct?
Yes, yeah, this year. So, it would have to be, if anything were done, it would have to be within conjunction with next year's budget, to what the attorney Moore's talking about.
Gotcha. So, proper procedure would be to bring it up close to budget time, probably around February next year, and bring it up in the form of an ordinance, because an ordinance, we're going to have to vote on that twice, correct?
Three times for budget.
At least twice. At least twice, right. So, is it something that's basically tied in with the budget or is it separate ordinance?
It is, there is a portion, if I recall correctly, of course, I've only done this one time. But I do believe that we do have to put that on the, on the budget ordinance that we did into the state, that we've thought on before that, so it would have to be before that.
Okay. I'll, I'll bring this back up again, January, February timeframe, and kind of recess. And I, I just wanted to bring it up to the council so they can expect it and maybe, you know, run under stuff like that, just talk to constituents about it and things like that, so...
Correct. Okay, thank you. The next item.
Could we think about this too? Like, I know with our county taxes, if you pay them in November, you get a two percent discount. On October, there's one. You know, like, our county, you know, city taxes are due is in February, which that's tax season time. People are hurting that right after Christmas. If we could, like, maybe give a, a small percentage discount if they pay them early, like we do with the county. I mean, that's just something...
That would be something we could add to the ordinance as well.
It would help people, especially at Christmas and tax season, beginning right there.
Yeah, absolutely. And it encourages, and it helps us as a city.
Right. I know it's not much, but it could help a little bit, you know?
And it helped the county. I know that she was saying the county, they were like, well, we got a bunch in because of it, so, every little bit helps.
Okay, all right. The next item is historical marker. I can actually speak to that. This kind of goes back to Baton Rouge, you know? For several years, the Historical Society and other people have been trying to make that into a historical site. And we came very close, the Historical Society, about four years ago. But then we ran into a situation where that landholders wanted more than the state was willing to pay at the time. So, we're kind of back, but we're still, we're still looking at that as a possibility. Now, this marker goes back to three, three mayors ago, I think Mayor Bowman, when they thought they might be able to put a trail up to Baton Rouge. It didn't work out at that time either, but they had the marker basically kind of off the landfill road, so really no one knew it was there. So, then they moved it out to, unless I'm right, if I'm wrong, they moved it out to a space right beside the, behind where the nursing home is now. But subsequent mayors didn't see paying, keep continuing to pay until that was developed up there. So, that's why it's kind of been in limbo. We're still working on trying to get money from the state to develop it, which would be wonderful. I would love that. As a, that was actually occupied by the Union troops. It was never converted.
Are we talking about the city buying the land?
No, no, no. What was going to happen, no. At the time, this was back when the Swiss Centennial was going on, and then the War Department, several of us in the Historical Society contacted them, and the commissioner came out at the time. We all went up to the top, we did, he did flyovers, he did mapping and everything. There was money from the state at the time to buy those sites and fix them up and then turn them over to the town, which was the concept, but it's private property. So, unless you get the property owners to come on board with that monetarily, then they just, they couldn't come to the same term. The state waited and praised it for, was not what they were wanting, basically.
How much was the, that they want for the renewal?
I don't even remember. This was four, five years ago.
I, I just wanted, like, it's, you know, whether, not to get into the politics of it, but it is, it is his, you know, my finisher with...
The, the final site, and this is the general order too, is that to put the marker there now when there's not really a site, let's keep working on making that a site, a tourist site, so that the marker will actually point to where...
It's not a tourist site, but it's still a historical site, does that make sense? So, like, it, it's, to me, it's very important that we, we focus, we, we focus on history. Now, I, I, that's why I'm curious about the price tag on it, because I would like to keep it out there. Now, I, I, that's why I'm curious about the price tag on it, because I would like to keep it out there. Is it, and, and I think we could develop it down the road. I'm not looking to develop it right now. But it still is a site. It's a, it's a site of history. It's an important site of history in our pound. And I think it's important that we at least mark it. Now, I don't know.
It's not our park, now?
Well, it's not our property. It's private.
The actual spot.
Apparently, it's, from, this is what I've heard, and I'm just going to go off of what I heard. So I'm not going to fight any battles on that. I heard that it was not renewed and it's always been there, and it was not renewed. I can be wrong on it, but that's what I heard.
Sorry, are you talking about the ma, the marker now?
The marker, yes.
It hasn't been renewed for three, well, since two mayors back, yeah.
So it's still there and they're not going to take it?
No, no, it was never renewed, so they took it away, yes. We, we would have to get it back.
So they took the marker away?
Yeah, because the, the town, they didn't, the councils didn't continue paying for it. You have to pay an early fee.
I think if that was an oversight, I think we need to go forward on putting it back there. I think it was an oversight that it was not.
I mean, there, I would love to go back.
We can certainly vote on that. That over, that, I don't know what to do. I think it's, I think it's about $400 or $500 a year to keep it. I'm not sure of the, of Kate's board, so.
And I, and I do think that's expensive, but again, it's history. It's something that happens. I do really feel we need to keep this mark, get this marker back and, and think it's important just to have it up there. So, I mean, based on that, you know, I'd like to motion that we go ahead and reapply for it. And then make sure that we, you know, we've put it in the budget every year as well, just so that we know it's coming up.
But could we not do it like a, a temporary marker?
I, I don't mind doing, I, I don't mind doing that. I just, you know.
I don't like what we're saying. I've been told we're saying, just play it up there, but I didn't.
Well, is it, well, Mayor Smith, is it like the marker that's in front of courthouse?
There's a couple of different ones. It's, it was, if I remember correctly, it was like a box, a wooden box. It just has the history of, of what the Battery.
Well, let's do this. Instead of voting on it right now, could you give us some information for the next council meeting?
Yeah, I'm glad you're bringing.
Like prices and to make what it looks like? Is that what we can just make?
Yeah.
I'd like to see what's on it.
Just a sign. I mean, we have a sign up there.
Well, to me, again, you're, you're marking a place right now that's there, but you can't get to it right now. That's what I'm saying. We can mark it. This is where.
We're springs up another one. Why are we spending this money if nobody can see it?
Well, that, that's probably what some of the board council said. I don't know. The, the original, when Mayor Bowman years ago originally went for this, they thought they could get a pathway up to Battery Hill and develop it. But it didn't happen because the landowners didn't sell.
And is there a discussion to reexamine that, to, to do a hand up there?
Well, as I say, about four or five years ago, the Historical Society was meeting with the landowners and the War Commission and the state of Tennessee and thought we were very close to doing that, but.
Bringing up to the Smithtown leadership class, is there always looking for projects that?
Well, this has to be done.
We keep spending more money. We keep, want to give away more money.
That thing, y'all talk about that. It's a local thing.
Yeah, I'm on a former base.
Right there, we're turning, kind of nursing home on bypass.
It was right there. We're kidding. We wrote. That's where it was at.
Oh, okay.
That's where it was at.
That's where it was at.
On request is that.
You know, like the plaque that was in front of there, the courthouse.
I think we did. I don't think you see that.
I don't know.
I, I think it'd just be good if we made a form decision, if you brought that information to us. And stuff that we can all decide, we'll wear the other next month.
Okay, I'll bring it back. It's, it's a company out of Virginia that does these plaques right on different places. But even they said, if we put somewhere and there's nowhere for them to go, they kind of, well, anyway, we can talk about it some more. Great, all right. What is our next, there's a?
That last item, we're going to address, so.
Okay, so the crosswalk, and we're okay to go ahead with that?
Yeah.
They vote out by motion. Second.
All right, all in favor of adjournment?